All right, we will call the Freeman School Board meeting to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is roll call.
Emily?
Yes.
Cody?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Carissa?
Yes.
Cody Spangler?
Yes.
All right, I will require, well, let's first discuss the amendment to the fiscal year 2022 budget.
Yeah, so there's, I was over budget in the food.
Okay.
Apparently, food costs went up a lot this year.
Yeah.
So, and then the other, the other health insurance was in the elementary. And then the salaries and the retirement taxes and supplies were part of the grant. I had budgeted for high school, summer school, but not a, not an elementary summer school, so. That's what that is.
Are there any questions or discussion? If not, I'll require a motion to approve the amendment to the fiscal year 2022 budget. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Cody Franzen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Doug, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. All right, next item on the agenda, board member oath of office.
You don't have to read anything, you can just sign them.
The first line here?
Yes, the first line.
Welcome. Yes, welcome to Cody Spangler and Carissa Pozemick, our two new board members. All right, next item on the agenda, board organization. First, we'll be taking nominations for board chairperson. Are there any nominations?
I'll nominate Emily Anderson.
Thank you. I think. Are there any other nominations? If there are no other nominations, I will require a motion to cease nominations for the board chairperson.
So moved.
Motion by Doug?
Second.
Second by Cody Franzen. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. So then we'll require a motion to approve Emily Anderson as the board chairperson for fiscal year 2023. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Cody Franzen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Doug. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda will be nominations for board vice chairperson. Do we have any nominations?
I'll nominate Cody.
All right. It was like some sort of a stare off there at the end of the table, okay. Cody Franzen, nominated for board vice chairperson, are there any other nominations? If there are no other nominations, I'll require a motion to cease nominations for the board vice chairperson. Do I have a motion?
Make the motion.
Motion by Doug? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Carissa? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. We'll require a motion to approve Cody Franzen as the vice chairperson for fiscal year 2023. Do I have a motion? Motion by Doug, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Carissa? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. We'll require a motion to approve the agenda, there are no changes, correct?
So moved.
Motion by Cody Franzen.
Second.
Second by Doug. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, conflict of interest disclosures, I have received none. Next item on the agenda, public input. Any requests for public input? There will be requests. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. So we'll require a motion to approve the following, the minutes of the regularly scheduled school board meeting of June 13th, 2022, the minutes of the Cornball Co-op meeting of June 14th, 2022, the resignation of Chris Mask from the position of head cross-country coach, and we thank him for his service, the resignation of Chris Mask from the position of assistant girls' basketball coach, and we thank him for his service, the financial report, and the claims for July. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Cody Franzen, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Doug. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries, next item on the agenda, administrative reports, elementary principal report.
I don't have anything, I haven't had anything in the building for two months, so.
All right, moving on, high school principal report.
Well, I wasn't here for the June meeting, so I just wanted to say a big thanks to our students and staff on a successful 21-22 school year, even though we're almost ready for the next year. Congrats to our seniors, we wish them the best of luck, we got them all through, so that was exciting. And then, a big thanks to the district for allowing me to attend the South Dakota Principal Conference and the Wild West Leadership Conference in Deadwood, that's where I was when we had our last board meeting. And then, just an update, we did, we currently do have, I think it's five or six students taking that Gateway to CNA course right now over at the nursing home. And then, those students will continue with an apprenticeship through the fall, so then they can continue to work there and gain credit for it. That is happening, there is a grant through Lake Area Tech, but they're not taking classes through there. Lake Area basically picked up the grant money to run the, funnel the grant through their school and then partnered with the nursing home. I believe Lennox was supposed to also do it, but they are now closing their nursing homes, so we are the current only ones utilizing that grant, which is a super benefit for us because they basically kind of get some money over there and they get to decide what to do with it, so they are trying to work through maybe offering some scholarships to those students who are taking that. You do have to be 16 within six months of finishing the courses because then you have to be able to get your CNA license up. So, basically sophomores and up. Kids can also do that Gateway to CNA course this fall as well. So that, some just decided to start the summer because they were going to be working anyway, then they'll do the apprentice, and then we can have some other kids do round two. So, that's exciting, so that's it for summer. Happy summer.
Thanks Katie.
The ASBSD and SASD joint conference is coming up, August 4th and 5th, that's in Sioux Falls. So with the joint conference, that's a very large venue, but Doug and I went last year and it was a very good conference, Emily was there the second day, yeah.
It was the evening before, yeah.
So, very, very good conference, a lot of good vendors that are there to find information out, and the sessions are very good as well. Cut off for the early registrations this Friday, so if you have interest in going, please let me know by Wednesday of this week. If we have three board members that would attend, there's one administrator that gets into the conference for free, so that's about a $205 value depending on if you have the early registration or not. So please let me know by Wednesday if you have interest in that. Amplification Bell and Intercom Systems is something that we're looking at, exploring right now. Seth has explained to me that our current system is aging, put it nicely. So that's something that we do need to start building into our budgets. The amplificator, the Bell system would be the most expensive out of them. It's about $160,000 for that system. And then the Intercom system is an additional about $80,000. Those are obviously quotes that we're getting right now, so that's not something that we have in our budget right now. That's not something that we're able to work into our budget right now, but something that is on our radar and what we're, what I shared with Debbie that we should start working on fitting that into our fiscal year 2024 budget. So we have some time. In the meantime, the amplification systems are what we need for our classrooms. And if you're not familiar with the amplification systems, that would be the little microphone that teachers wear around their neck, and then that's tied into a speaker system that's in each classroom. So we have two new classrooms in the elementary that do not have them, be our sixth grade classroom, our new kindergarten classroom, and what's the third that doesn't have it, Shane?
Preschool was what we were gonna, the preschool room was the third one you wanted to do.
Yep, oh yeah, the ECSE, childhood special education classroom. Something that would be very valuable for them to have in that classroom. So, what you see below that would be the quote that we received for the amplification systems. So total for those three classrooms would be $5,613.78. Good news is that we have a tech budget that's already been approved and set, and we do have room in that tech budget to squeeze that into that, but I just wanted to make sure that the board was aware that that is something that we'll be looking at trying to get put in place by the start of the school year. It may not happen, just for how busy everybody is right now. May not happen by the start of school, it may end up turning into something like a winter break type of install, but we're gonna get those installed as soon as we can. Gym floor, the touch-ups are completed and it looks very nice. So very, very pleased that the company stood by their, their work and came back and did the touch-ups and did it free of charge. What they ended up doing is an abrasion to knock off some of the imperfections. There were still some that still existed, so they did another abrasion, which is a light sanding with that second one, and ended up scuffing up some of the paint, so they ended up repainting the entire floor for us and put a coat of sealer over top and then two coats of finish, so it looks, looks very, very nice. So we're very pleased with them coming back and performing that work. Summer superintendent conference is next week, that will be July 18th through the 20th, that'll be in Oa Comer, so I will be gone for that and look forward to that. One that I attended last year as well and was also a very good conference. Debbie had mentioned that August 8th is a really tough time for getting all the financial reports done. Just happens to be one of those years where that, that meeting falls very early in the month. So, something that she asked me to present on tonight, if we can have some discussion, if that's something we could look at, maybe pushing that back a little bit further. She mentioned even Wednesday of that week could be a possibility. I'll turn it over to you Debbie, go ahead and share any thoughts that you have about that.
Wednesday, we could run checks on Monday, because we have all the bills by the fourth. That's okay? Wednesdays? Do Wednesday work?
Wednesday works for me.
I mean, it works for me.
Same time, seven o'clock? And I believe that would require a motion and have to change that date.
We'll do that after we're finished with here.
Wednesday at seven, okay. And then the final item that I have would be to discuss dates, if the board wished to do this, so another discussion item that the board felt that we would like to do, board training. Board training would be where we call a special board meeting, and Sam Kerr has been one that has been identified as a person that would be a good person to come in and provide training since he's a school lawyer, he's familiar with the district, and we're familiar with him, and that'd be just a good individual to come in. It's something that Sam does for, for different districts. I've talked with him about this, and he said that recently he just did a training with the district and they wanted an hour and a half to two hour training. And I said, you know what, I think that's something that would, that would be very good for us too. And for me, I think just when you get longer trainings, you get, you know, over that two hour mark, it gets hard to keep your focus, especially if we decide to do that in an evening after working a long day too. So, up for discussion, is that something that with, it's recommended that every couple of years that the board, school boards do a training just to, just to have some touch-ups on, on the information that we need and our practices. And, you know, with us having a little bit of turnover in our board, that could be something that would be beneficial. I'll turn it over to the board to discuss. Sam did, sorry, one more item, finished reading my notes, the week of August 22nd, and the week of August 29th is the week that he is, the only weeks that he's available the rest of the summer here.
And it would be in the evening?
He's talking one of them.
So it'll be one night. One night is what I'm opposing.
I think it'd be a great thing, and I think it'd be a good thing.
I think so too, I think it'd be really helpful, I know.
Either night works for me, so.
Could do the 21st.
Any night that whole week.
26th, 27th, 28th. Can do any other, can do that, does Monday nights work better for, best for folks, or?
Is there junior hypo voting on Monday nights? Not yet, maybe?
They would be at, they would be at four o'clock.
If we did something like seven?
Yeah.
Would that work?
Twenty-second, yeah.
So then I advertise for that meeting, it'll be a special. That's meet all our legal requirements prior to that.
Okay, sounds good. That's right, because we'll be in one for sure. Sounds good. All right. Thanks Jake.
Motion for the.
Yep, I'm gonna do that under new business.
Next item on the agenda, unfinished business, I don't have anything. All right, we're gonna add something under new business, and that will be to move the August board meeting to Wednesday, August 10th at 7:00 PM. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Cody Franzen.
Second.
Second by Carissa, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries, next item on the agenda, the school board will hold a budget meeting, or a budget hearing, excuse me, at 7:30 PM, so we'll circle on back to that. See what's on the agenda in the meantime. Everybody help me keep an eye on the time. Next item on the agenda, presentation from A.D. Christie Sage about our activities for the 2021-2022 school year. That sounds good.
Okay, I'm gonna give just a brief summary on our athletic programs, just highlighting the, for each of those. And after that, I just have a few other items of information for you tonight as well. So, starting in the fall with football, we had seventy, seven boys on the varsity roster. The Canastota Freeman Pride team finished at the Dakota Dome, and we lost to Platte Gettys in the nine double A state title game, eight to 14. In volleyball, we had 25 high school girls, finished with a record of 20 and 10. We defeated Irene Wakanda in the Region Five semifinal. It was a five-set thriller that was held here at Freeman High School. And that preceded us to the Sodak 16. We lost to Arlington in that match, it was held at Sioux Valley High School. We had two girls that were selected to the Cornball Conference First Team, and that was Kate Miller and Erin Nuker. And those Cornball Conference selections are done by the coaches, all the coaches in the Cornball Conference, so they select those players. In cross country, we had five varsity girls, those were made up of high school and junior high girls, and we had three middle school girls. We had one high school boy and six middle school boys. Our girls' team, they were runner-up at our Cornball Conference track, Cornball Conference meet. The region meet was held here at Valley View, and at that meet, you have to finish in the top 20 to qualify for the state meet. We had two girls that did that. Riley Peters placed 14th at the region, and then at the state meet, she finished 60th. Peyton McCune was 17th at the region, so qualified for state, and she finished 86th at the state meet. So we had good representation there. In the winter, wrestling, we have four Freeman boys. They had many duels and tourneys throughout the season, and our boys had lots of success. We hosted the region here at Freeman High School, which was a very busy day. And Riley Chutter placed second at the region, that qualified her for the state meet, and he placed seventh at the state meet. He was in the 132-pound weight class. Girls' basketball, 11 high school girls, six junior high girls made up that team that finished 10 and 11. We lost in the region semifinal to Centerville. As far as all-conference honors, Kate Miller was selected to the second team. They pick three teams of five, first team, second team, 13th. They also have an academic all-state award, and that's something if, if, the coaches that are in the Coach Association, that's for seniors. And Paige Auque, who is a senior statistician, was selected as all-state, academic all-state. So she received a certificate for that. In boys' basketball, we had 14 high school boys and two junior high boys that made up our high school teams, and they finished 1 and 20. We lost to Alcestor Hudson in the first round of Region Five. Again, academic all-state, we had two senior statisticians, Ava Ammon and Lily Wiff, who received that honor. In track and field, my numbers that I have, I have 17 high school girls and 19 middle school girls on our roster, seven high school boys and 21 middle school boys on the roster. Again, lots of successes at meets throughout the season. We had very successful meets here at our track at Freeman High School. As far as the state meet, we had, our girls' team qualified three relays and four individual events. Our boys' team qualified five individual events. Earning a medal at the state track meet were Riley Peters was third in the 100-meter hurdles, and she was also third in the 300-meter hurdles. Dawson Monkfold was fourth in the 110-meter hurdles. And Jorgan Bear tied for eighth place in the pole vault at the state meet. Our golf team, we had four high school girls, and we had eight boys, high school and middle school, that made up that team. The following individuals qualified for the state meet and their place at the state meet. Paige Auque, she placed 59th at the state meet. Lily Wiff, she placed 74th at the state meet. The girls golfed at Hart Ranch, the state meet, and they actually played the whole tournament, two rounds, two days. The boys played at the Elks, they actually didn't finish both rounds due to weather and lots of craziness, I guess. We had three boys that played at the state meet. Tannen Auque finished 73rd, and again, their results were only based on their first round, their first 18 holes, because they didn't finish their second round. Thor Anandson finished 115th, and Zach Seiler finished 122nd. I'm gonna move on, I have a couple of things. So, the South Dakota High School Activities Association has an academic achievement team award. We say students learn in two ways, inside the classroom and outside the classroom. We recognize teams for their academic excellence, so it's based on a team GPA. And so teams that reached that status were girls' cross-country, girls' basketball, girls' track and field, and girls' golf. So we get a certificate on that, so that's great, our kids are succeeding in the classroom and out. Character on track, you maybe saw a poster, so something we do every year at school and it's related to our athletics. It's a program that exists to provide vision, leadership, and resources for the greater community to promote and develop meaningful character traits that help foster good decision-making. The program is based on five marks of character, trustworthiness, respect, accountability, citizenship, and kindness. We believe that if we can focus on our youth and help students understand, care about their consistently practiced strengths and core values, they can be strong and flourish in school, in the workplace, and as citizens. And so we selected three seniors that were that team, and that was Paige Auque, Jacob Swenson, and Lily Wiff. And then those kids talked to our elementary students about those things, so. Think it's a good program to get those kids up there, and the young kids like to see them, and those kids did a nice job with that. Okay, a couple of other things that I just want to tell you about. So as an athletic director, I am part of the South Dakota Interscholastic Athletic Administrators Association. We call it SDI AAA, that's what we call it, so. I have a couple of things going on in that program this coming school year. So I'm in the mentoring program, so they ask who would be a mentor to somebody, a new A.D. So, last year I was a mentor to, there was a new A.D. at Parkston, and so this year I'll get somebody different, I guess. So I'm a mentor in that program, and it's just, sometimes I have questions and I don't know, and... So I'm always glad to have somebody help me with a question that I have, so I think it's a good program. Another thing, I was nominated and I was elected as the Class B representative on the executive committee of that, and it's a three-year term that I'll be part of that, so that will be new for me this fall. They also are going to do a strategic plan, they haven't done it yet, so great, let's, let's get that going. So they asked if I would be on a subcommittee, and I think I'm gonna be on the finance subcommittee. I said, as an accounting teacher, I would probably pick that, and they said, sure, sure. So, and one other thing with that is we have a leadership training institute, and I've taken lots of courses through that, and that's how I got certified and had to test and so forth. So they've asked if I would be part of their instructor staff on that, so we'll see. I guess I'll get a chance to have new students, so. So yeah, I might be teaching some classes with that, and usually we do that at the A.D. conference and so forth, and sometimes in the summer, so, yeah, excited about that, and... So that's all part of the SDI AAA. One other thing that I learned about through that was something called build your base. I don't know if you've ever heard of that. So it's through the South Dakota Beef Industry Council, and it was started kind of to promote beef and just, our young athletes need that, right? And, and so that's what they were stressing and promoting, and so I was able to apply for that, and I got accepted, our school got accepted, and I did it, I did it for football. So I'm gonna apply for this for our football team. And so, I don't know a lot about it, I'll learn more, but we, we will receive nutrition information and funds to purchase like beef jerky and beefs, you know, maybe, maybe a pre-game or post-game, something for our athletes, so. I think it's great that we would be able to partnership with our local beef producers, so I see it as something that could really grow. And I, and I think when they started it, I think it was geared at football, but I, I think it has expanded, so. So yeah, I'm kind of excited about that, I'm, I'm not sure what it is, but... So, sounds like a good deal, and we'll, we'll get on board with that, and it'll be something that our athletes will benefit from, I think, so. All right, my last item of business is practices are starting soon. So football starts August 4th, and our cross-country and volleyball start August 11th. So prior to our first practice, we're going to have a fall activity signup, football, volleyball, cross-country. That's gonna happen on Tuesday, August 2nd, at 6:30 in the high school gym. I'm gonna ask that all parents and student athletes would attend that, right? And then at that meeting, at that information night, I will present information on a parent-coach communication protocol, and I have a copy of that, I'll give you here when I'm done talking. And then I also will talk a little bit about fan behavior expectation and that kind of thing. I think we've all seen something in the media about officials, we're losing them. I mean, they're retiring and we're not really gaining from the young folks, and, and so what, what can we do to help with that, and I think it has to do with behavior and so forth. So, I want to talk a little bit about that, that night as well. Will be an opportunity for parents to turn in physicals, and then coaches will have an opportunity to share information about schedules, expectations, whatever it might be. So, that we can do before anything gets started. So we'll get more information out on that, but again, that will be Tuesday, August 2nd at 6:30. And then the coaches can, again, share information about their programs and kind of get the GroupMe stuff going, the GroupMe app that night, and, and so forth. So, yeah, I realize maybe it's not gonna work for everybody, but hopefully, for the most part, we can get people, people there and get information out, so. Questions for me? If not, I'm.
I'm assuming you'll do that for the winter sports as well, and then again in the spring.
Yeah, so I think that will be our goal, and, and before anything starts, right? So we'll do it, and then, yes, that's for sure. And it will be for six through 12, six, students six through 12. So am I, am I over my line, time here?
No, I was just.
Just about perfect timing. Just about perfect timing. Seven-thirty. I'm gonna share this with you, and, um, this all comes from the National Federation of High Schools. So it's, um, it's pretty standard, and, yeah. So it's not just a local thing or a South Dakota thing even. So, all right. Yeah, thanks, Chris. Thank you for your time.
Is this something you're gonna present at that meeting?
I am. I'm gonna give everybody a copy. And I'll have, we'll post that, too. We'll get that posted online, and...
Super.
Yeah, this is great. All right, let's, uh, go back to, um, item number one under new business, which is, uh, the budget hearing.
So, I presented the preliminary budget in May, and it's pretty much the same, except I made a few tweaks. On my, up, the supplies, like, the natural gas, the gas, the fuel, those kinda things, that all have gone up. So I added that, added to that. And basically, the, the expenditures are ninety pro, ninety, ninety-five percent are salaries. And then what's left over, the state pretty much tells us what we're gonna get for state aid by our enrollment, and also capital outlay for our enrollment, plus our debt. And, um, we have two new teachers added on there, and that was just over a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. Their salaries are new. Um, we gave their teachers the raises, of course. We talked about that. That did not come, that came from, strictly from the six percent increase we got from the state. And some things to look out for next year, we have, um, half of Matt Brinkman's and all of Katie Yonkies and Austin Unruh's sa- salaries and benefits come out of the Esser grant, which I'm gonna be pretty close to being done with next year. I managed to get two of them out of the Esser two yet. I mean, Esser three, the twenty percent. Anybody have any questions? You can see that we have, um, we're using fund balance for the general fund and also capital outlay because of the building project. And also food service because food costs have obviously gone up. The boys and the girls, hopefully, their activities will be changed, too, obviously, because we, we haven't hired all the coaches.
Question? It will be finalized in September then.
Our balance and capital outlay should be after projects are paid for.
I forget what we had in there. We had...
A little over one point five, if my memory serves me correct.
I think so. After we, I think we have two point five in there now.
Any other discussion? Okay, if not, we'll move on to item number three. We'll require a motion to designate the Freeman Courier as official newspaper for the district, name Core Trust Bank, Merchant State Bank, and First Interstate Bank as depositories, and authorize the business manager to move the district's checking accounts to any of the designated depositories at his/her discretion. Appoint Scott Brewer, Freeman Police Chief, and J.T.K. Superintendent as truancy officers for the Freeman School District. Appoint Christy Sage as the title line coordinator. Appoint Rebecca Hofer as the District 504 ADA Coordinator. Re-adopt the Cornbelt Cooperative Special Education Comprehensive Plan. Appoint Business Manager as Health Insurance Privacy Officer. Appoint Dean Driesen as a hearing officer for free and reduced meals. Authorize the business manager to invest and borrow, borrow district funds when feasible at his/her discretion and save insured securities to earn a higher rate of interest whenever funds are available for a specified length of time. Appoint the Superintendent as Director of Federal Programs. Appoint the Business Manager as Director of All Accounts. Hold all board meetings at the junior, senior high school the second Monday of every month at seven P.M. in the high school media center. An official quorum will be set at three or more board members in one gathering. Authorize bids, authorize bids and quotes for fuel for the 2022-2023 school year. Designate Sam Curv, Lynn Jackson, Shelton LeBron as legal counsel. Authorize the use of signature stamps for the Business Manager, Board Chairperson, and Superintendent. Are there any questions about that? If not, I will take a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Cody Franzen, second.
Second.
Second by Doug. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, board members will be assigned to the following committees. Uh, Task Force Committee, let's, I'll keep myself and Doug on that since we're not quite done with the Phoenix Co-op Agreement for Continuity. Uh, Policy Review Committee, uh, let's do Carissa and Cody Spangler. Facilities and Grounds Committee, I'll keep that also at Doug and Cody, given that we're in the middle of that large building project for continuity. Wellness Committee, is that just the alternate? There's not two people. It should just be an alternate. Oh.
Do we need for, do we need one or two board members for Wellness Committee for annual meetings?
I think you just had one. Just one, it should be. I was just...
Yeah, sorry.
That's what I thought. Wellness Committee, uh, Carissa. Um, and Cornbelt Cooperative, I'll be the representative, and, uh, Vice Chair Cody Franzen will be the alternate. Would you be okay with that? Uh, next item on the agenda, we'll require a motion to set activity admission prices for the 2022-2023 school year. They're currently five dollars for adults and three dollars for students, um, six dollars for double headers, four dollars for, um, for adults, and then four dollars for double headers for students.
That's pretty standard.
Pretty standard. Some are higher. I mean, we're not higher than anybody.
Sure.
Some are higher.
I think we should stay current with inflation, boost them by fifty cents each.
Orders are too much.
Change is annoying.
Think if you're gonna increase that, increase it by a dollar.
Where are you from? Freeman are paying attention when you saw?
Absolutely no. Doug will be taking all the tickets, all the change for all the activities.
So, do you know offhand, like, what some of the others are? I mean, if we're pretty standard, what's, what's the higher end?
I think we're pretty standard. I mean, some might be the six and four at a regular, you know, and maybe just a little higher.
Sure is easy to slap that five-dollar bill down and keep walking.
Is there any reason to raise it?
We got budget concerns coming.
Just 'cause everything is raising.
Esser funds run out. That would be the only reason I would suggest to raise it, was just because Esser funding is...
When's the last time we rose, when's the last time we increased the price?
It's probably been a while. I, I think those have been for...
As long as I've been here.
Yeah.
Did you just do six and four for all games, regardless if they're double headers or not? Could do that.
I'm good with that.
Yep. I think that's a great idea.
Great.
Then nobody complains when they have to pay more. Yep.
Yeah.
I like that. Do six dollars for adults, regardless if it's a single or a double header, and four dollars for students, regardless if it's a single game or a double header. Uh, if there's no further discussion, I'll need a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Cody Franzen. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Carissa. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is activity ticket prices for 2022-2023 school year. Right now, adults are at fifty-five, students are free. Do we just wanna bump the adults up then to, like, sixty? Or do we keep with about the same? Seems reasonable to me.
Fine with me.
Yeah. Any further discussion? All right, then I will need a motion to raise adult activity, uh, prices for the 2022-2023 school year from fifty-five dollars to sixty dollars for adults, and students will remain free, um, for students attending Freeman Public School. Do I have a motion?
Removed.
Is that Doug?
Yes.
Motion by Doug. Do you have a second?
So moved.
Second by Cody Franzen. All in favor, say aye. Same sign. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is to require a motion to set board member pay for fiscal year 2023, currently at sixty dollars per meeting. I don't have any issues keeping in that at the same rate. I think that's reasonable. All right, if there's no further discussion, I'll need a motion to keep the pay for board member at sixty dollars per meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Carissa. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Cody Franzen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda will require a motion to set school lunch prices for the 2022-2023 school year. It looks like everything's going up by ten cents.
Most things.
Most things, not the a la carte, not the milk.
Stay the same.
Breakfast is up, K through six. Reduced meals will stay the same.
And conversations with, with Debbie on this one, just with...
Yeah, I was curious.
The cost increases for everything. We felt that we needed to bump things up, but...
I thought we were gonna go up on the a la carte.
We certainly can. That wasn't...
Ten cents as well?
Yeah.
Would be your recommendation? Okay.
Is it ten cents the highest you can go, Doug?
Yep. Not, I'm not on the a la cartes because they're not part of the, you don't get reimbursed for that. So the reduced and the free, well, the free, obviously, but the reduced price is set by the state, too.
Okay, so that'll stay the same. And milk will stay the same.
And we are going to have to charge for meals this year, so...
Yeah.
It's gonna be rather painful.
I really got used to that. All right. Any further discussion on... Any further discussion on, um, increasing the school lunch prices for adults, seven through twelve, K through six, and a la carte seconds, and breakfast up by ten cents each? I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Cody Franzen.
Second.
Second by Doug. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda will be to set substitute pay for 2022-2023 school year.
Yes, these guys to my right, they will share with you how much, how difficult it is to find subs, and more times than not, I think we was in the classroom subbing, especially the last half of the year. I don't know if Shane struggled to find subs for the elementary as well, and I don't know if it'll make any difference, but I think it's one of those things where we just need to keep up with our neighbors, and, and I know every district around the area is doing everything they can to try to attract more subs, and what we don't want to be in is that, that district that's, that's still paying, you know, anywhere from a hundred and five to a hundred and fifteen, and the neighboring districts, you know, get paying a hundred and fifty, and then we end up losing our subs to the neighboring districts. So keeping up with them, and then, um, we're looking at, we've always paid mileage for subs if they, uh, live outside of the Freeman City limits, so we'll continue with that. And what we're proposing is that we provide a complimentary lunch for subs, and that's not, that's not a huge deal, you know, as far as the financial side of things, but it's just one of those nice little perks that when somebody comes in and subs for the day, they know they can go to the commons and cafeteria and get a lunch, and hopefully sit and hang out with their students, get to know our students a little better, too.
Seems reasonable. Any further discussion? If not, I will take a motion.
So moved.
Uh, Doug? Motion by Doug. Second by, second?
I'll second now.
Second by Cody Franzen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda will require a motion to set meal reimbursement for adults and students. Same for adults and students. What's our discussion?
Um, another business manager in neighboring town did a survey, and we're pretty...
It's been consistent with, uh...
We're actually higher than a lot of other schools. We're higher than the average.
My gosh. There is no way I could feed one of my children for, this is the breakfast, for six dollars. No, I think that's reasonable. If it's what's reasonable out there, I think that that's fine.
If you go to McDonald's for lunch, you can't get it for a little bucks.
Any discussion? If not, I'll take a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Doug. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Carissa. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. We'll require a motion to set mileage reimbursement for staff members for fiscal year 2023, currently at forty-two cents per mile, and that's set at the federal level.
That is what's...
The state level.
State.
I saw the state was like fifty-eight cents.
Federal and the state, they're...
Just for school, it's schools, it's different.
Right.
I don't know if schools are different, but that's, that's the state rate that...
The IRS rate's fifty-eight.
I was just gonna say, I thought the, yeah, the federal rate was...
It was July first, right?
Yeah. All right. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Cody Franzen. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Carissa. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is to set worker reimbursement for activity events in fiscal year 2023.
I think we added thirty, I think we made thirty dollars for the track meets, didn't we?
Yeah.
Everything else twenty, but thirty for the track meets, right?
We redid all of that last year.
I was just gonna say, yeah, 'cause...
We redid everything last year, and I think that got us in, in a good spot.
Yeah, okay.
'Cause it needed updating.
Yes, it did. I remember that.
We need to change anything that we said last year.
Okay.
Anybody remember exactly what them were?
They were all different.
Twenty, twenty...
They were all different based on...
They were, yeah, based on varsity.
Right.
Right, right.
Junior high or...
Right. It, it should be in that, in the January or July minutes, right there, that book that I gave you to sign.
I do remember that.
And we'll just make a motion to keep it the same as what we had in last year.
Okay.
Really.
Does anybody else need to know what, yeah? All right. All right, so Cody Franzen's making a motion to keep the, uh, worker, uh, worker reimbursement for activities for fiscal year 2023 the same as it was for fiscal year 2022. I have a motion by Cody Franzen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Doug. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is, um, second reading of the Phoenix Cooperative Agreement.
That is included in your packet if anybody needs to see that or would like to see that. With the additions, we, if it's highlighted, that would be the, the second meeting that we had with the, uh, Task Force Committee. And if it is just red, so if it's highlighted in red, that'd be the second meeting. Just red would be from the first meeting that we had with that, the task force meeting.
Are the two other schools on their second reading?
Um, one for sure. I wanna say, yeah, Academy didn't have a meeting.
This month, so...
But they were okay with, uh, moving forward with it for the August meeting for the approval.
Approval? Our last meeting, I think the only real significant changes were the light song.
The light song.
Be generated and then reduction in charges until.
Until we see, yeah, what the needs are of the program.
Too bad Seth left, I was gonna have him sing it for me so I could hear it.
All right. Any additional discussion? Right, next up on the agenda is, um, an update from the Facilities and Grounds Committee.
For some sprinklers. Uh, sure, um, so last week Friday, um, had long time limit come over to cap the line that was cut for addition project out here, so we can get our sprinkler system going over on the elementary side. Uh, went to fire the pump up and the pump is seized up, so we need a new pump to have our sprinkler system. Remember the numbers, I guess we got.
One thousand seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars and eighty cents.
That's the pump install and everything, so.
Okay, that's the whole thing.
You should get the, get the screen and get the practice filled.
Yes, absolutely, yeah, that makes sense, okay.
The ground area as well.
Right. All the new solder on the elementary school is all irrigated and really taking a hit right now, so.
Sure.
I guess my recommendation would be to go forward with it, so.
Yeah, that seems reasonable.
Building project wise, everything's tracking schedule wise, steel actually delivered yesterday. Panels are still on schedule for, uh, second week of August, so. Uh, issues with rooftop units, they delayed production, so it's not to be expected until probably the end of December, so we'll put a temporary unit up on the roof and still plan to turn over early November as planned, and then we'll just swap the unit out. So, obviously, we don't need air conditioning in November, December. We'll just get it good and hot in there, so, other than that. Pickups.
We had a meeting prior to our board meeting tonight, and we walked around the perimeter and, uh, just looked at different areas of concrete in the future that'll, that'll need to be repressed. Strategized as a, um, a, uh, Facilities and Grounds Committee, you know, how can we improve upon things so maybe the same issues don't present itself? For example, on the bump outs in our parking lot, those are currently curb, and just when, when it snows, you just can't see them when they're moving snow, and you, you bump into them and it chips the curb and it makes those edges look very poor, and then also becomes a tri- trip hazard. Uh, and talking with our school insurance company, uh, earlier this year, they said that's something that we need to develop a plan. Don't have to fix it necessarily right now, but develop a plan for how we're gonna fix it in, in the future, so. I had, prior, uh, prior to the meeting today, I had met with Rex Winkle and, and our construction crew out here and, and, uh, um, just walk the perimeter and identify different areas that potentially we would wanna, wanna look at. So something that, whether it's, um, we're gathering quote for it, um, just matter whether. Or whether we have to, uh, cable it for a later date, but would be to fix the concrete, something that they recommended would, is to seal the cracks in our parking lot. There's, it's very salvageable right now, but if our parking lot continues to deteriorate, it's, it's gonna go pretty quick if we don't, um, get, get that sealed. Um, another thing that you can expect in the future is the, the lines in our parking lot are very faded. Um, I did try to go out there with the, the spray paint machine that we use for the football field, and tried to spray paint them myself, and it didn't turn out as good as I had hoped. I don't know if it'd be very cost effective either, cause it's about, um, like it was like eight, eight bucks for a can of the, the paint for it, and I got three lines done, so, there's a lot of lines out there. Um, so I'll be, in the future, I'll be gathering a quote for that. Doug was gonna share a couple of different companies that I can reach out to for that. Um, and then there's, uh, and a couple of safety issues and, uh, potential ADA, um, compliance issues with, um, a couple areas, uh, one, um, safety out on front. If you guys noticed last winter, coming to a sporting event, there is one section of concrete that butts up to our heated concrete that comes out of the high school, that heaved up very, very badly and, um, to the point of becoming a very strong trip hazard. Uh, we need to look at some options for that, cause there's some, um, other issues to, to make sure that that remains, um, ADA compliant that we'll have to look at, but all that's gonna be factored into the quote that we'll get from Rex Winkle as well, so. A few things that are gonna be coming up, and, uh, I'll be presenting it hopefully at the, uh, next board meeting that we can make some decisions on whether we wanna move forward with that now or if we wanna table a later date.
Right, thank you. Next item on the agenda, discussion about purchasing an ADA compliant school vehicle.
In your packets, we have a vehicle, and it's two separate, um, sheets, but it's the same vehicle. Just had more pictures, um, on the second page, the second attachment, I've handed both of them forward. This is, and could be one option for us, uh, right, currently, we do not have, uh, a vehicle that is able to transport any students that would be in a wheelchair. Uh, currently, we, we haven't, um, had, uh, students that has had that written into their IAP that we need to have that, but it is something that is, would be very good for, uh, the district to have, cause, uh, those things can, can happen very quickly, and if, if it does get to the point where a student does have that in their IAP, uh, that we need to provide transportation, we need to have a method in which we can do that, and currently, we don't have, uh, a method of transporting them. Uh, so we have, uh, two options, could be the van option, uh, in calling, uh, this Mobility Works, it's out of T., South Dakota, it's a, uh, what they explained to me, the only company that's certified to be able to provide this type of vehicle in South Dakota. Uh, so we could go the van route, this van that you're looking at is a twenty nineteen. Um, it does have the ability to, to haul, um, two students, uh, that are in a wheelchair, uh, so that would be, you know, I think valuable. Uh, it does have the four seats, so a driver, a passenger, and then two bucket seats behind those two seats, so it could still be, the vehicle could still be used for, um, activities or, uh, teachers or coaches or administrators going to conferences, you know, things like that. It could be a, a multi-use. Another option could be that we have our, um, current vehicle that's being, um, used for the autism room. This could become the new vehicle for the autism room, um, and, and be used for transportation there, and then we could use, what is the, the Tahoe, but.
Yukon.
Yukon, thank you. Uh, Yukon could be then repurposed and used for other school activities, could be an option too. Uh, so we have the van route, which is, as you can see, the price is fifty-three thousand seven hundred and twenty-five. Um, and talking to the gentleman, the sales rep, there, uh, it's a, I think there's seven hundred, over seven hundred individuals that are looking for, um, vehicles, that are, uh, looking for new vehicles. So I asked him to move up, uh, order newly, so that's not gonna happen anytime soon. Uh, so the fact that they have one, um, is, we are very fortunate. I don't, I can't guarantee that it's still gonna be available if the board decides to go this direction. Um, another option that we would have is to, um, we were, we had built into the budget to ordering a new school bus for this next year, so we could add, uh, the handicap, um, uh, lift or the wheelchair lift, uh, to the bus. I've talked to the, the, the company that we went through that we've ordered our previous bus, that's gonna be here in December. Um, they put together, they're in the process of putting together a Sourcewell quote for us, that would hold, that bus would then hold two wheelchairs as well. He didn't give me a formal quote, he said that they had some turnover within their company, so they're, um, behind, but he said that it would be no more than a hundred and twenty-two thousand for that bus, and that would be for a fifty-nine passenger bus, um, having the, the lift and be, uh, wheelchair accessible. Um, our bus that we ordered that was a fifty-nine passenger without the, um, handicap option, wheelchair option, um, was, I think, ninety-seven thousand dollars. So that's, uh, uh, somewhere in, within a thousand dollars of that, so, um, it is, you know, it's with the product demands, and they, they had predicted that there were gonna, there was gonna be a twelve percent increase when we ordered that last bus, and I think we're seeing all that, maybe a little bit more, so. It is a more expensive option.
Problem with that one too is then we'd, it would have to be a bus driver that can drive a bus, whereas with the van, we could have a teacher or anyone else.
Oh, sure, that makes sense.
So, and talking to Debbie, Debbie favors the, the van option.
Okay, I was curious.
I talked to Morgan this morning, and Morgan said that, from her perspective, uh, Morgan would be the, the teacher in the autism room right now. Morgan yet, um, she re, she said that the, the van seemed to fit the district's needs better right now. I don't know if that'll still remain in the future, but it seems like a, a more affordable option and.
It does.
Something that fits our needs a little bit better right now. I'll leave it open to the board for discussion.
Is there anywhere close by that would have a new van available?
Other than the one in T.?
Yeah, new one, I'm just curious, you know, if you look at, you know, I always look at the cost of owning something per mile. If you're gonna get two hundred thousand miles out of this van, it's gonna cost you about forty-three cents a mile to own it, if you don't look at maintenance or anything. So, if a new one was available for eighty-five thousand, that's a better deal. If they're not available, they're not available, so.
Yeah, and, um, like he, they had shared with me, they're the only company in South Dakota. I think that's, you know, good for us to try to keep our business in state as much as possible. I certainly could branch out, uh, to other companies outside of, uh, South Dakota, and I imagine if they have the waiting lists that they do, they, probably every company in the nation has the same waiting list, so, uh, that's something to, to think about. Open to whatever, whatever the board would like to do.
I like the thought that Debbie brought up, that it'd be a little bit more versatile as far, as, um, we'd be able to drive it, so it sounds like it'd be a little bit, you know, and that way you're not driving a full bus for, you know, even just one or two people.
And it takes a lot of room to, to park a, a bus.
It does, so it seems like this might be a little bit more of a better op, that's my thought anyway. I don't know what everybody else thinks.
She brought up a good point, and I'd asked the company about this, and they, they said that they thought they can maybe do this, but, um, with that open space, you know, it's, if we don't have a need for, um, for, use that, that space for wheelchairs, could we add, add additional seating? They thought that they could probably look at, you know, adding some kind of a track that can have a removable bench, uh, so that's something I would like to explore if the, if the board decides to go this route, and we can, we could use it to haul a number of our students.
Yeah, okay. Any other thoughts or discussion? All right, then I'll require a motion to approve the purchase of an ADA compliant vehicle for the school district. Do I have a motion? Motion by Cody Spangler. Do I have a second? Second, second by Carissa, all in favor say aye. Oppose the same sign, motion carries. All right, next item on the agenda, we'll require a motion to enter executive session for the purpose of South Dakota Civilified Law one dash two five dash two, parentheses, one, um, as well as discuss. Yep. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Franzen, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All in the same sign. All right, an executive session at eight oh four P.M. Everybody?